Call the Cumberland School Committee meeting to order at 7:30 A. and ask you to please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in it. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Pleasure of the committee. Motion by Mr. DeMonica, second by Mrs. Teal. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries six zero with Mr. Denon absent this evening. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have approval of minutes, regular meeting four nine two thousand and fifteen, executive session three twenty-six, executive session four nine. Pleasure of the committee on the consent agenda. Motion by Mr. Fiorello, second by Mrs. Teal. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries six zero. Next item, report out of executive session minutes from four twenty-three two thousand and fifteen. There were no votes taken. I need a vote to seal the minutes of executive session. Motion by Mrs. Teal, second by Mr. Fiorello. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries six zero. Next item, recognition, district Chromebook presentation, April fifteenth two thousand and fifteen. Dr. Thornton?
It's just a shout out to our tech team. Last week we had the Rhode Island here for the spring tech conference and our tech musical team made up of Leslie Moore and Kyle Santos, Erin Schabett, Beth Coughlin, Jason Patterson, Keith Caldwell, Paul McMillan, Sean Connolly, Christine Payson, Sumila Ogno, Phil Sawyer, Justaro, Shmigra Savigas, and Tim O'Brien presented the Chromebook initiative. I was truly impressed how strong it was. People who saw the presentation were really, really impressed with how it's going, the teachers, the administrators, everyone in the office, they're great presentations. I just want to just let you know it was really well received. I've been told these folks have been asked to probably do it again somewhere else in the state. It just went so well.
Who was the audience?
Folks from Rhode Island who wanted to come learn about Chromebooks and the whole initiative and how it's fun.
Nice. Any questions? No? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the chairperson's report, the funding formula in the BEP. I do have a little update from the House Education Study Commission and it's my understanding they'll have a report ready by end of April, so within the next few weeks. And I do believe there'll be a meeting either next Friday or the Friday thereafter so that the committee can review the report. Any questions? Nope. Next item, payment of bills. Mr. DeMonica, sorry.
Madam Chair, there were no payment of bills this meeting tonight.
All right. And do you have a fiscal management subject?
I do have a fiscal management update. We did meet tonight upstairs. There was no business office monthly report. We did have discussion with Dr. Barton about the employee contracts that he has put up on the list for us to vote. I guess we will be voting on this on May twelfth. It was for discussion only. And one other item that was on our list was discussion and vote to approve a resolution for the lawn care equipment. We had approved that on April ninth. This is just a housekeeping issue where we needed Cindy Schabett to issue us a resolution that we could attach to that resolution. So it will be Resolution SCPR four two thousand and fifteen oh six, which we approved on April ninth. And that was...
All right. Thank you. Achievement and communications subcommittee update, Mrs. Teal?
We have not had a meeting since our last meeting, but we will have, continue our discussion of presentations from the schools next, prior to the next regularly scheduled school committee meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Fiorello, building committee?
Actually, I'm going to actually talk about policy for a moment.
Oh, I...
We did not meet, but we are going to be meeting in a couple of weeks. We're going to start a whole new batch of policies to review and to update. But also, one of those policies will be the health and wellness policy that Mr. Salvatore will give us a brief update from the Health and Wellness Committee right now. Thank you, Mr. Fiorello.
Yes, the District Health and Wellness District Committee met last week with Mr. Mitchell and we are doing our final revision of that policy. But also a outline that we got from the state. So it's a pretty solid policy. I think this board will be happy with it. Then when we do present it to this board, Corinne from RIDE is going to attend and give an update from her perspective also. So, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
The building committee hasn't met. I'm hoping to meet by the end of May. Just get everybody in the room and go over what the engineering board has said and also give us an update on the conversations that are happening at the state level with the lifting of the moratorium and who's going to be able to approve projects. It seems to be getting a little murky up at the state level. So, stick to...
Well, I'm sure they've had quite a submission of requests, so... And the priority is health and safety. Is that correct?
Yes.
Are the health and safety priorities tiered? Like, is it just health and safety or is it...
That's a valid question.
Okay.
And I don't know if there's an answer to that, just you.
All right. Appreciate that. Thank you. Comments from the public? Is anyone here to speak this evening?
Hi, my name is Sherri Mears and I'm here representing the Cumberland Girls Hockey Team. As you know, we've been trying to stay active in supporting the team and plugging into what we need to do within our community to continue to have the program for our girls. And we were, last night we met with the athletic director and we were told that no longer does Cumberland support the girls hockey program. And as you can imagine, that was a pretty big shock to all of us and a surprise considering we were trying to work with the school committee and the town to do what we can to continue the program. And it obviously brought out a lot more questions and grave concerns on our behalf. We've done everything to be an active board, to be there for the town, the girls, and the community so that we can continue the program. And we just felt like it was pulled, the rug was pulled out underneath us without any information, decisions, and, I don't know, any real, I don't know, I guess, explanation of why we would not be able to continue the program. So when we met with the athletic director, we were also told that the Lincoln-Cumberland co-op program had dissolved because Lincoln doesn't want to be the lead anymore, which somewhat understandable because they only have two girls. However, Mount did reach out to our Cumberland system and said, "We would like to have you participate in a co-op program along with Lincoln." And one of the stipulations is that Cumberland would have to sign as fiscal agent. And that particular stipulation was denied by the superintendent. And we are here to ask if it's possible or either, I don't know if we can ask you questions, but, you know, why is that? I can't understand the back history, but that is prior to our board and ourselves organizing around this to make sure that nothing like that ever happens again. And I feel like we have good faith in showing that. We've done fundraising. We're continually showing up here to make sure we understand how to go about the process and do what we can to be able to make this happen for our girls. And it just seems like there was no regard for that whatsoever. And here we stand with, at this very moment, no program and we're not ready to accept that at this point and do what we can to influence or help out to figure out how we can collaborate and partner on this to make this happen. I mean, there has to be a certain element of trust on both parts. We need to trust that you guys are there to do the right thing on behalf of our children and we're here to do the right thing on behalf of our children so that nothing like that happened in the past happens again. And just in fairness to everybody, we have girls, as we've mentioned in the past, that are being looked at by colleges and here's their opportunity to get scholarships potentially, some of them, or continue on their career in something they love, even if it's not a scholarship. They've been doing this since they were eight years old and five years old and to have it taken away like that without any, again, discussion and explanation is just, I don't know the right word to use, but it's terrible actually. So we are requesting for some help or explanation to help us try to bring this back to the table. We have funds and if somebody even came to us and asked exactly how much we have and then said, "Okay," I don't even know if it was about the funds. I mean, I don't, we didn't get there yet. We were supposed to move forward to go to the town council per a little direction from yourselves to try to advocate and make sure that we're known as wanting this program and we're there to, again, just try to continue it from not being eliminated. And we were doing that. We were just trying to understand what the meetings are. We wrote letters to the mayor. We're trying to make sure that we know that this is something that's important to our girls and we don't want it to go away. I don't know how this whole works. If anyone could talk to me or if I'm just supposed to state my case if I missed anything.
At some point, not so much just for girls hockey, but at some point down the line, sports are slowly being eliminated and you're going to see more and more co-op programs from other schools coming about. So this is the first that you're hearing of it now, but it's not to say it's not going to come up in future years from now, whether it be boys hockey, volleyball, swim, whatever. Co-op is becoming the new thing and we need to embrace and see what we can do to help our kids so they can stay in the sports that they love to play.
So I'm going to defer to Mr. Adams and he's our legal counsel and he'll give you a little overview on the conundrum we're in with regard to this.
So, without any specifics to what you guys are doing, and I really don't know all of that, but in general terms, the Rhode Island Department of Education has come out quite clearly, and I think all school districts should be mindful of it, not just Cumberland, that to the specific question of having privately funded girls hockey, let's use this as the example, and have the school department serve as what you call a fiscal agent, because I think that's what Mount St. Charles has suggested or has asked or whatever. The Rhode Island Department of Education has taken a very firm posture with respect to what is known as pay to play. It is verboten in Rhode Island. You cannot have parents paying to, so that their kids can play. Either the school department in Exeter, West Greenwich, or Cumberland, or Barrington, or Warwick funds a program, or they don't. They may not have any obligation to fund, for example, girls hockey or boys track or whatever the sport is that folks may think is important to them. But if there is going to be that sport, it needs to be, this is what RIDE has generally said, it needs to be funded by the school department. So in a situation where the Mount, as I understand it, has suggested, "Hey, just have Cumberland serve as the fiscal agent." I'm not really sure what that means, but I think it means the school department would take the money and then distribute it to a program that's not even a Cumberland program. It's a Mount St. Charles program, I guess, or a co-op program as you described. I think what RIDE's position would be is that's pay to play, just doing it a little more creatively. So that's the conundrum that the school committee faces with respect to having a sport have its very existence dependent upon parents paying for it. So that's the challenge.
What is the precedent in the state with other co-ops? Do they typically just go right to, do I sign it? I mean, how does...
It's not a co-op issue. You guys are focused on that. This is simply a pay to play issue. Co-op would exist if a bunch of schools, a bunch, two, three, funded it.
So, okay, so Lynn Havland, also speaking on behalf of the girls hockey program. So I have a friend on the Barrington girls team and she told me just within the last couple of weeks that they always have to raise money as part of their co-op, five thousand dollars or thereabout, and they have creative fundraising. She told me some ideas. So what does RIDE think about that?
A, yeah, I didn't, I don't want to get into a this and that on it. I don't represent the town of Barrington with respect to their, what they do in hockey and if they're doing it right or they're doing it wrong. That's for me as a taxpayer in the town of Barrington, I guess, to figure out, but I don't represent them and...
I'm sorry, so it's up to the interpretation of the law? It's not black and white? Is that what it is?
No, that's not what I'm saying. If somebody drives through a stop sign, you shouldn't drive through a stop sign, right? It's still illegal to do it, is what I'm saying. Just because somebody does it doesn't make it okay because they did it, doesn't make it gray, if you follow my thinking on it.
I hear what you're saying, yeah.
Okay. There's a letter to Mezzanati. I refer you to that. It's a letter from the commissioner on pay to play. So you guys should take a look at that and read it for what it's worth.
Well, I wasn't just looked at when it was brought here two, three years ago about the signing of co-op program, which wasn't pay to play. Why wasn't this looked at then?
Because at that point, there was no... At that point, there was discussion of fiscal agent. Parents, as agreed, were paying Lincoln directly. We weren't involved.
That's not how it was set up. So that goes back to your administration. They're not doing their job, so now our girls are going to have to suffer, which that's not fair to them.
Well, or decide. What other choices do we have? I mean, we're looking to you if it's not a co-op, something where we can have a program for our girls. And we still do want to continue to ask the town and yourselves to help fund. I mean, you know, we do want to fundraise, but we feel that their equity needs to be considered here as far as boys and girls sports. And I know we've talked about lining up all the sports and the one that always keeps coming up in our personal discussions is the girls golf team. We've tried to research and find any girl that has participated on the girls golf team and from what we understand, nobody can come up with a name. So why would you continue to say that that's, why have that be in your account? Take it out and slot us in so that we can have fair chance here to stand when we have girls who want to play on a sport. And if that's true or not, I don't know, we tried to find out if there was any girls that had participated and that continues to be in the one for one match, but yet we can't take them out of the equation and say we're going to bring in girls hockey when you have active girls that love the sport that want to play. We have nine girls now. Next year's going to be nine. We keep growing it currently now. Can't fill the team ourselves, but we need to get in with another organization and we're looking again for the community to help offset some of the expenses. We don't want to be fully pay to play. I mean, we can try to keep fundraising, but then when we say, "Yeah, we have nine," but really try to fundraise with nine girls. I mean, to pay that bill is pretty big. So we do have a significant amount of money that can help contribute to that, but year over year with eight girls fundraising, it's hard enough to crack. It's a big bill to pay. So if we can't maybe solve the pay to play or get into the law trouble, what can we do? What is there? What else?
So at this point, because I think we've tried to be collaborative with this and it has been a challenge because of the fiscal obligation is a big one. So it's not like one of the sports that does cost less. It is a big price tag for us. So at this point, this is where we are today and we'll continue to work with our legal counsel and Dr. Thornton to try and find a solution that might work. But I think the athletic director speaking with you was kind of an advanced warning. We're struggling with this because we can't, we can't do pay to play and we have to be certain that the girls are insured and that's another part of this puzzle that we've, that's presented a challenge for us. So as we navigate through this, we're trying to find a solution. At this point, we don't have one, but we have spent quite a bit of time. Girls hockey is the sport we've talked almost exclusively about of any of the sports right now. So we've put considerable time and effort, just we don't have an answer for you today.
We're not really sure about the whole insurance piece and, I just, a quick question. When we were with Lincoln, did we have to do the same type of rider? Only because I'm wondering, did you just kind of shift it or is it a brand new, yeah, like, can you just move it from that insurance, that financial aspect over to Mount if we ended up figuring out how to fund this?
I don't have all that information. We can dig into it a little bit more, but I think it has to do with if you're serving as a fiscal agent, which we did when we paid the bill. We served as the fiscal agent, but in this instance, we would not be the fiscal agent because we won't, we can't accept the money as a pay to play because it would end up being considered pay to play. Therefore, how do you move towards a sports team when we can't pay the fee and Mount can't accept you as the students? So that's the challenge. And we can certainly reach out to the Interscholastically. Maybe they have some, some work that they've done with this. But, you know, I think folks want to be able to support it, but given, given the constraints against us, we're challenged to, we don't have a solution right now. And I think, you know, giving you the advance notice was the best that we could do, that we don't have a solution for this right now.
One other question, sorry. I think I had mentioned in one of the earlier meetings that, I think it was yourselves or maybe ourselves that lacrosse at some point, you had to kind of pull it together financially before it was considered flourishing, whatever the terminology is. How would they have done that? They must have had to pay to do that. They must have to self-fund themselves before you guys recognized them as a program. So is that the state?
So we can only base our decisions on what information we're given today.
How did they pay them? How did they pay to play?
So we're basing our decisions on what our legal counsel is providing us today.
So one other question with regard to dissolving the co-op. So RIL has a rule of phase out period of two years, minimum one year, maximum two years. And from everything I've read and so not, you know, a legal background, how does it get dissolved overnight and still be okay within those requirements?
I can't answer that question for you right now, but we can certainly, as I said, we would reach out to the Interscholastically. It has to do with dissolving a team or a co-op within two years. Once you, once you sign on, you kind of own the prize for a couple of years. How could you dissolve it in a single year? I don't have the answer for that.
Because when it's, even when it's a one year, I think the idea is that it gives the students a heads up like, "Hey, you know, this is it, last year of it." But to say, "Hey, this is it, last 24 hours of it," is kind of what they're looking at right now. And I think, I think a rule like that is put in place to prevent something like this. Be interesting to look into this.
Thank you.
I have one question, sorry. Get them all out now. Are there any other athletic programs that are partially funded? But if they have to be, if they're going to be under the umbrella of Cumberland's school system, do they have to be fully funded?
So we're looking, we're looking into that now. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Yep. Any other comments? Next item, new business, discussion and/or vote to approve Resolution SCPR four two thousand and fifteen oh six lawn care equipment purchase. Mr. DeMonica?
Madam Chair, as you indicated earlier, we voted on this on April ninth. This is just a housekeeping issue to come up with a resolution so we can put it into a vote. There's no vote needed.
So we approved the resolution or we approved the purchase?
We approved the...
The purchase.
The purchase on the night we did not have the resolution.
So I think what we've done historically is we have approved the resolution just to memorialize it, if you don't mind.
And, Madam Chair, we did not take a vote upstairs. The guy says, "I didn't think it was necessary," but I'll make a motion here on the floor that we approve Resolution SCPR four two thousand and fifteen oh six for the lawn care equipment that we did in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred and nine dollars, twenty-eight cents to, you know, for power equipment. So the purchase one to one.
So a motion by Mr. DeMonica and a second by Mr. Fiorello. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? And that motion carries five to one. Mr. Duffy voting against. Thank you, Mr. DeMonica. Next item on the agenda is discussion of Cumberland School Department's strategic plan. Dr. Thornton?
Yes, at your place. I believe you have the plan on your drive if you have it handy. You can open that up. Look at the date here, June fourteenth, two thousand and twelve. So it's been, been three years and I thought we'd just take some time this evening to go over some of the action I've had on there. It's really nice to see in many cases we've made a lot of progress. Looking back at the attendance sheet, who's the team back then? I have two members here, two members, Teal and Julio, were on that team back in two thousand and twelve. I'm not going to spend any time right now on the mission or vision or those type of things, but I want to go over the steps if you could. As you know, RIDE has a protocol for the plans in terms of, there's several categories that you can kind of put the steps into. So just with Bob and I, I'll just take you through kind of like some, just thinking on some of the progress that we've made. So if you look at page six on the, looks like this, the first page that has these action steps. If you don't have it in front of you, that's, that's okay. I can, thank you, Strategy One, I can read these through to you. So the follow-up column has kind of like the big ideas on what we're looking to do back in two thousand and twelve. The first one, back then we had a discussion of priority standards in curriculum area. I know to me that one's probably ongoing. We certainly have started that conversation. The second one, we talked about RTI. I think we'll all agree, we're still not, not there yet with RTI. We're still looking for the RTI coordination and RTI leadership. Number three, the high school schedule. We did some work with that, as you know, with the earlier release on Wednesdays. I think now with the new grade to the high school coming out, that'll really profoundly change the high school schedule. That's probably going to be staying on our list. NIESC, as you know, we did that, checked the box, we were accredited. District rating policy, that was a long road, but we certainly achieved, achieved that. Next one, we're not there yet. If you look at it, program enrichment, I know that's always on the list and I would say not there yet, but that would continue. And obviously, as we meet this summer or fall and kind of making a new plan, you would certainly put on things you want to see in terms of these areas. I'm sure that's still, I mean, there's still... The next one we see there, APC, the Proficiency Center, that's been published at the high school. Saturday school, we have that, but I don't think we're doing it with OCYL as we had here back in two thousand and twelve, but we do have a Saturday component. But I would say it's not as robust as it could be, but that's there. Data teams, we had that all the schools, but I think that's an ongoing discussion. Curriculum area leaders, got to check the box, we did that. Publications, district-wide rubrics. Bob, any thoughts on that, where we are on that?
Well, I think, you know, we've done a lot of work on rubrics district-wide. I think we need to do a better job of publicizing them and I know we've had conversations about revising our district website and making those more accessible. So that is a conversation that we are having in time going and actually we've done some revision with rubrics across the district. So that's, I think, an item that will always be an action item.
Page nine is really good news. First one's full decay. Remember that? Did that. Classroom technology, the other ones, checked the box, completed that. Classroom, the whiteboard initiative did it. Policy book, I would say, yeah, we made a substantial dent in the policy book. I went once around it, I think, almost completely. So now we're on a second loop. Any iPad pilot, I don't know what schools did it. So that's a nice, nice page. We achieved all those and that was the category two, the ensuring equity. So that's a nice, nice piece. FCAP, next page, I think it's ongoing, we're not there yet, but that's, that was on that back in two thousand and twelve. Two-year budget plan, as you know, Alex recently was looking at, you know, three or four years. So we're still looking at that. I don't think we've really finished that yet. The next one, I would say not yet. We're talking about a personnel management system. I think we have a system, I don't think we're really there yet. We've really updated the files and done some work there, but we're not fully there yet. A tech capital expense cycle, we always talk about, you know, replacing machines at certain quarters. I think that's always on our mind, about updating budgets and times to hand experience us now if we can get that in cycle if we want to have it. So we're not there yet on that. That's not there yet. Next page, K science, right, Judge? Yeah, that's ongoing, we're there. Next one, Bob, any thoughts on that? Curriculum?
Well, I think our, you know, all of our content is standard-based. We've done a ton of work in implementing a standard-based curriculum. So, and that is ongoing. We're still learning and people are still adapting to that, but I think we've made tremendous progress in that area.
The next one, I know we had some discussions on that at the middle level, making sure all opportunities are equitable across all the grade levels, but that's not on the conversation, I think, because that was on our mind in two thousand and twelve. Back in two thousand and twelve, we had down textbooks master plans. You know, I would talk about how many textbooks we had that were need by head now. We added the Chromebooks. That's changed the conversation now where maybe we don't, you know, have to look at a textbook at the high school for chem. We're going to buy a tech book, not a textbook. We're going to buy a tech book, not a textbook. So I think that'll change the conversation on my master list, on tech or textbooks we need. That's still on the list. K-12 covered the night time, probably the most time we've ever had. It's been well-received. We have four days in the schedule. We have the Wednesday component. We have folks commenting to Bob about last year, you know, it's nice to meet K-12 art people in the same room, or we're using.
What did we have at this time?
In 2012, you know, my first years, we had 180, 40 calendar, we had one PD day, we had orientation day where they got together for like half a day. We had superintendent meetings once a month, we could call a meeting, that's pretty much it. So we added, you know, four PD days in the early Wednesday component to it.
If I could just add to that, Dr. Thornton, Mike Chandler and I attended a conference the last two days called Future Ready Conference. And it was really focused on digital learning into the future. And we had several opportunities to meet with folks from literally all over the country, Indiana, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Connecticut, New Hampshire, were just some of the states that I recall. And one of the things that we talked about was professional development and common planning time, and teachers, educators having an opportunity to collaborate and get together to talk about their professional practice. And I brought up our early release Wednesdays a couple of times, and several of the people that were involved in my conversations were really impressed with the fact that we have this weekly opportunity for teachers to collaborate. And, you know, we know that we have it for middle and high school teachers, and they see that as a tremendous advantage and opportunity. And the elementary teachers are envious of that. So we need to figure out a way to make that happen. You know, we'll be having that conversation in the next contract negotiation. But having that opportunity for educators to meet on a weekly basis is a tremendous opportunity for us, if a lot gets done.
Look at page 12, moving on. That's another nice page for the district. The first one, the new eval tool. That was put into place for CTA, we were doing that, the X eval tool. Thinking back to 2012, we really didn't have a solid tool for evaluation of X numbers. We do that. The calendar, once again, quarterly PD, vertical, horizontal discussions, we do that now. District PD support, in our budget, I call it, in the middle of the light bulb, we have a dedicated, a lot of money for PD. That's always there, no matter what happens. That's in there, that's since 2012. Math specialists, we certainly have those now, and that was a new thought back in 2012. Next one, I think we're still ongoing, data systems. I don't think we're there yet, but that's what they're looking at still. Next one, we actually changed. We had aims went back then, we had a tech tool to measure progress, but now we're in renaissance. We changed because it was kind of clunky and wasn't really give us what we need in terms of the standards. So we moved to renaissance starter, if you will. High school, back at that time, we lacked a progress monitoring tool, which once again now we're in renaissance. We have a way to measure now progress for kids that don't have it. That's a good thing. Next piece, newsletter or district commanding, certainly with the help of the committee, we have had some sort of meetings. And now also, we have our communications person to help us with that piece. I think we've really kind of ramped that up. That's ongoing. K-5 report cards, the interest-based, got that. Secondary report card, yes, we do. Checked that box. I think the next one, we should do more of that this spring and summer, and that's in terms of visiting with Bob, myself, Alan, President. We did a lot of that, I think 12 and 13. But I think probably more of that should be happening again, so I'll probably get that ramped up again. That's a nice thing to see, though, to kind of reaffirm that. Next page, high school security, did a lot with that, as you know. And truancy, we have a new president, he's outstanding, so we really worked on that. Next one, I think that's ongoing in terms of Mike Chandler's work, it's his mission in terms of filtering. It's the holy grail. I mean, I know, as you know, last year, I think China hacked into Hathaway Island once, you know, kept knocking on our door, and I said, crashed all the networks. And Mike's constantly looking for ways to kind of get ahead of the bad guys on that. PBIS, I think that was solid back then, solid now. I have no other remarks there. I think the one that we should do more of, just down below, typically, you would do a yearly conversation where we are. I've been in a couple of years, do that with you, so probably that should be happening yearly. Typically, and it's one of what happens, is we have another kind of large, you know, conversation. We can certainly revisit the mission, the vision. You might say they're flying, you might want to change those. The last time we had Dr. Lang to help us kind of do something with it, we certainly do that again if you'd like. Couple options, you could do it, you know, over the summer every day, you could do it in the fall, in different groups. It's really up to you. That's kind of the sense of where you are. Overall, I'm pretty encouraged, seeing a lot of work was done in the past, which is nice to see. And that's kind of where we are.
Any questions? It's really a good opportunity for the community to service stakeholders and contribute to this conversation. So it also is an opportunity for faculty and administrators, and also just community leaders to talk a little bit more about where we want to see the district go. But it's reassuring to see so much progress has been made. And it does, for those of us who are there, remind us of really the mountain that was in front of us. So nice job, Dr. Thornton. Thank you. All set with that? Next item on the agenda, discussion of employee contracts. And there are 18 of them here listed, from assistant to the business manager, assistant principal business manager, confidential assistants, director-level folks, IT manager, network manager, preschool administrator, and then the litany of elementary, high school, and middle school faculty. And Mr. Demonicke, this was in fiscal sub for discussion, and it's, agenda here is discussion only.
Ma'am Chair, we did discuss this with Dr. Thornton upstairs. He is presented, and we did have a spreadsheet done by Mrs. Fogel for us to accompany the list of contracts and his proposal for extending them and pay, et cetera. And my understanding, we're going to vote on this first meeting in May. The only change to this list that Mrs. Fogel will break them out, so there's two assistant principals, so when it's on the list, there'll be A and B. And same with the elementary principals, A, B, C, D. So when we take the votes, whether we take them whole or take them in pieces, we can identify which ones we want to improve and how to overextend and have a discussion about the pay raises that he has indicated, that he is offering, he's asking the school committee to support.
So this is in the drive for folks, so we have a few weeks to take a look at it. And if anyone has any specific questions, reach out to Dr. Thornton, and he will have those answered. Anyone else? No. Next item on the agenda is personnel recommendations. Dr. Thornton?
We have none for today.
And lastly, school committee comments, school liaison reports. No? Happy vacations, everyone. Nice and quiet. Next item, we do not have executive session, so Mr. Fiorella, the last item. Thank you. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Duffy. All those in favor? Those opposed? And we are returned at 16:00. Thank you, everyone.